It is now 10:01. Today is February 4th, and we will have the Montague County Commission meeting for today. We will do the call to order. Commissioner Callen?
Here.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Here.
Great, we're gonna move forward, and I ask everyone to stand up, please, for a moment of silent meditation, and then a pledge to the flag. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Be pit. I haven't, yeah, we haven't had a chance at this on this. I want to welcome everyone here. It's not, it's rare that we have such a standing-room-only crowd. I didn't know, we should've sold tickets. We'll get started. Consent approvals?
We have nineteen exonerations, sixteen thousand nine hundred forty-four dollars and ninety-six cents for tax years 2013 and 14. Fiduciary matters, orders of February 4. We have a final report on the estate of Lillian Ethel Lewis that you'll be taking up as a separate issue. Minutes of January 14 and 21, 2015. General County vouchers, two hundred twenty-six thousand six sixty-eight sixty-four. General County Fund Purchasing Card, twenty thousand one thirty-nine forty-three. Cole Severance Fund, twenty-nine thousand thirty-nine fifty-two. Kent Muffley, one thousand nine forty fifty-eight. Kent Muffley Purchasing Card, twenty-eight thousand six ninety-one twenty-one. Chestnut Ridge Park, two thousand two fifteen eighty-four. Chestnut Ridge Park Purchasing Card, thirty-nine eighty-nine. Mason Dixon Park, five twenty-seven thirty-six. Home Confinement Fund, seven thousand four ninety-eight seventy-three. 911 Purchasing Card, nine oh seven sixty-nine. 911 Cash, one thousand six hundred thirteen fifty-seven, for a total of three hundred nineteen thousand two hundred eighty-two dollars and forty-six cents.
Okay, we'll break them into two orders. The consent approval first.
Move for approval second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes? Okay, our second item, as mentioned, was the estate of Lillian Ethel Lewis, and how did you want to?
Well, first I ask if anyone's here, if anyone's here to speak on this.
Okay, is there any individual here wanting to speak on this specific issue? If you are, please stand up, state your name and your address, and you're more than welcome to speak. Did anyone, okay, if you'd state your name and...
My name's Timothy Harris, Lillian Ethel Lewis's son.
Okay, and where do you live?
I live in Independence Road in Crescent County.
Okay, how can we help you? You wanted to speak on the issue, or?
Yeah, the will said it was to be divided equal among her surviving children.
Right.
I've never heard a thing. All of her furniture, everything was sold, her jewelry, I don't know what happened to all of her stuff. The executor there, I've never heard nothing.
Okay.
Never received a dime.
Okay.
And the house was sold. I have no idea, even, when the house was sold.
You filed, you were one of the people that filed a protest, right?
Yes, sir.
I read, I read the whole package, yeah, last night.
Okay.
There was a few other things that I didn't put on my list, like she had life insurance policies. I have no idea how much they were. All the household items, everything like that.
Okay, so, appreciate you speaking, and we're gonna discuss this after everyone gets a chance. Is there someone else who would like to speak on this issue?
Yes, we...
If you stand up, please, and state your name and your address. Oh, thank you, sorry.
Yeah, my name's Keith Smith. I'm some of the executor of the estate. She would speak on her own behalf, but she's very hard to hear, and she's also hard to understand. My brother and I helped her take care of getting the house ready to sell and do stuff to sell the estate, and we have all the receipts, paperwork, and everything, where money was paid out to have work done to the house so it could be sold, so on and so forth. Do you all have copies of that, of paperwork?
Well, we got, we got, we got the summary paperwork, which is in the final settlement statement.
Yeah, as far as household items and stuff like that, there was a yard sale. All of that money that was taken in from where the household items were sold, along with the sale price of the house, was put into a savings account where it is now, where it can be divided up once all this is settled.
Okay, okay, thank you very much.
Also, relatives came in there and took a lot of items that they weren't entitled to.
His mother took most of it. It's very expensive.
Okay, just one at a time, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so, I mean, they weren't entitled to, they just took it, you know, instead of just leaving everything there in the house so it could be taken care of.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir?
Yeah, about the household stuff...
Okay, your name and address.
Walter's son, the executor. The stuff that did not sell from the yard sale is all donated to Salvation Army and Christian Goodwill.
Great.
That slips for it.
Okay.
Like I say, if you think, you told anything was sold, it was put in the account.
Okay, thank you very much. Did anyone else want to speak on this issue? Okay, how, Commissioner?
I think we ought to refer this back to the fiduciary commission, Mr. Armistead, for his review and taking of evidence, whatever he deems necessary to make a recommendation to this commission, so I'd move that we do that.
I will second that.
Okay, there's been a motion to refer back to the fiduciary commission. I think that's a great idea. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, so, for clarification before I continue, I see that the fiduciary agent happens to be here.
He just, he just thanked me.
Yeah, is there something you would like to say at all?
I want to tell, I...
Sure, go ahead.
I believe these, y'all have lawyers working for you on this? I think Mr. Magr, one's Mr. Romo, is that right?
We don't have a lawyer yet. We were, you know, gonna try to do this without it.
Matter of fact, a lawyer? I'm thinking about another...
I'd have to be a friend for a lawyer.
Okay, good.
Great.
We'll have a hearing in this room in March.
Okay.
After they're done with their hearings in February, March or April, have your lawyers contact me, we'll set it up, and you'll have a full hearing on all of this. I have a long attention.
And we thank you for coming in. I mean, if you wanted to leave now, we understand, because I know the county commission meetings are sometimes so exciting, so...
Thank you very much.
Okay, great. Thank you for coming in, and I believe we'll work it out, okay?
Okay.
And thank you for following the procedures. Okay, I'll wait till they leave, because then we will open it up for comments from the public. They'll open up some seats.
There's no reason to even speak, guys, go.
It's all right. Okay, guys, okay, thank you for coming. Please walk out carefully. Could sing goodbye, you all, but I don't think that's gonna work. Great, there are seats if there's people out there in the waiting area. We now have seats if you want to come in. Great, okay, at this time, we will open up, we've changed the meeting agenda so that now comments from the public can be heard first, before we address issues. If anyone likes to speak, feel free to stand up, state your name, where you live, and we'll go from there. Does anyone like to speak at this public hearing? Oh, I didn't, I'm sorry, I apologize. I apologize, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'd just like to let everybody know that I brought Diana with the copies of the two drivers that we're gonna use for the trucks.
Okay.
And that we closed our site yesterday because the bins were full.
Right.
And, you know, I don't know how much farther you guys are gonna be able to go with this as a courtesy to the people in the county, but you may want to consider, I remember Jamie said yesterday he spent most of the day cleaning up around the sites, and he lost another site. If there's any way you could have those in in the closed area, we can't close them down like we, you know, we're lucky we have the advantage here, obviously, it's easier for us. You guys got a bigger burden than we do, but I'd give, you know, food for thought.
Unfinished business, we'll talk about recycling since, you know, that is coming up. Also, I do want to get a clarification for the people, even though you have old, the old bins, you are, could you explain that you still would be accepting single stra, I mean, people...
Well, we're in the process, our signs should be here by Friday, we're gonna put a sign out there and let everybody know that it is, in fact, single stra, I'll have that now, and we'll describe what you can, but we're gonna continue to keep the fence and the gate up just in case it does get full.
I think that's a good idea.
So we can just close it off, and then we can go from there.
And I appreciate that, and the three commissioners are adamant in trying to get a recycling program, and you're really helping us out a great deal, so we appreciate it.
Well, you know, I think the county, the people, residents of the county should appreciate you guys' efforts as well, because you're one above the beyond. It's not something that you're mandated to do by anyone, so...
Well, thank you very much.
And just one more thing, Diane, your hair looks nice today.
We had to have that, I mean, that was important, and that was good. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak during the comments from the public? This is the time to speak.
About anything?
About any, about any?
Anything on the agenda.
Anything on the agenda.
I'd like to just ask a couple of questions.
Sure.
When I got the agenda yesterday, I noticed that you are gonna be taking up some security procedures for the courthouse.
Yes.
There was a memo attached to the copy of the agenda that I received. It was dated January the 29th, and it was directed to all county officials. However, I've never, yesterday was the first I've ever seen this security procedure memo, and so I apologize that I have not had an opportunity to speak to the committee prior to today. But I do have some comments and concerns about the procedures that are outlined, if they are intended to be...
Yeah, we're gonna get, okay, we know that they were, the recommendations...
...revision.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes.
We had asked, just for clarification, you're correct, we were asking for a report from the sheriff, and we were waiting to hear from him, but now we have us in front of you, now you can, it could help us, okay?
Okay, well, that's the only revision, is you change it from noon to five until one to five on a, yes, okay.
Yes.
That really wasn't the...
Your word.
Yeah, that really wasn't my biggest concern. I have three, three points, or three comments and suggestions that I'd like to make. Number one, as it relates to employees of the county, any department in the county, I feel that any employee that has a key card access should have the ability to go in and out any door in the courthouse. There does not need to be, there's not any special procedures currently for an employee that has an electronic key card. It's electronically, has the ability to be electronically monitored, it's noted. The scope of the work that we do in the county clerk's office requires us to go to the Montgomery Ward's Building across the street. I work, my interns and my staff work until eight or nine o'clock at night on several occasions. The way the wording is currently in these procedures, I think, would be, would put, especially the employees in my office, that's all I'm going to address at this point, at a disadvantage. They leave here after, after dark. We all are aware of how dangerous the city of Morgantown is getting, and to ask them to leave through a chancery road door to get back to the parking garage after dark, I think, is, is a little much. Many of the employees that have had key card access to this building have had it for a number of years. To my knowledge, there has never been an incident. They are all aware, at least especially the ones that I am responsible for, what the requirements and the responsibilities and the procedures are for using key card access. So, my suggestion number one is that whatever you do for the public, and I think that that's fine, if you're going to go to one entrance for non-county employee people, I think that that's fine, but I would ask you to give, to rethink the provision in regard to county employees.
Okay.
The second comment that I have is in regard to the after-hours access specifically for the record room and the attorneys. Last year in April, Commissioner Hawkins, you were not on the commission at that time, but Commissioner Bloom and Commissioner Callen, and then Commissioner Bartola, entered into an agreement with the local Montague County Bar Association, the county clerk's office, the sheriff's department, and the commission to handle questions that had arisen due to some security concerns for the after-hours access. To my knowledge, that agreement has never been amended. I've not received a, I signed, I have a copy signed by Commissioner Bartola, and I have a, I signed a copy and sent to sheriff, but I've not received a copy that has been signed by the bar or the sheriff, all combined. So I'm not certain if you have amended that agreement in any way, shape, or form, but I would ask you to consider the fact that not even nine months ago, we had already broached this subject and had entered into an agreement with the local attorneys to keep their access to the record room available to them after hours during the week, and on the weekends. Number three, it's just a personal point that I would like to make. I noticed in these security procedures, it said that we agreed to amend these weekend hours available. I don't know who "we" is. Like I said, I was never invited to a conversation or a discussion about the access to the record room for the county clerk's office. I, I was not even aware that these procedures existed until I got the agenda yesterday. So I'm, I'm just sort of concerned about what has taken place up until today, if there has been an issue that has not been brought to my attention and I was not aware of, but I would just ask you to consider those three points.
Nice question.
Yes.
Where was, where in this was the "we" agreed?
On page two.
Page two of the...
Down, right before it says, "Weekend hours available."
"We have agreed..."
Says however, "We have agreed to have weekend hours available."
I don't believe the "we" is either.
Okay, well, I was just...
No, I, I understand.
I can, I can tell you where the "we" is. That was the sheriff and the, their staff who said "we," being them, would agree to after an hour, that's what they're saying. That's how it said.
I understand that. My only point being that if there was a "we" involved, one of the persons in the "we" should have been the county clerk. It is a direct effect on the operations of the record room, and out of respect for the county clerk's office, I would like to have had been involved in any discussions relating to the hours of operation or the access to the county clerk's office.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And those will be taken under advisement when we discuss it. Yes, sir?
Stephen Schuman. I've been practicing...
Address, I'm sorry.
Stephen Schuman, Morgantown, Las Vegas, attorney-at-law. I've been working in that record room on Saturdays and Sundays since 1973. I've either had the combination to the vault in the old record room, or had a key to the current record room or a car. And in the forty-some years that I've worked in there on Saturdays and Sundays, I have never witnessed an incident of any sort. I don't know since we entered into this agreement if there has been an incident. If it is, it's not been made public. And I'm pushing seventy years old, and it's not really gonna affect me as much as it's gonna affect a lot of young attorneys, who need access to that record room off hours to make a living. It will directly affect a lot of young attorneys here, and I would like for this commission to explain to me why there's a necessity after forty-some years to take away this privilege, because I'd like to have the all hands of it.
And we will when we discuss, we're not allowed at this time.
Well, we're taking comments, we will answer that.
We will when it's brought up, okay? Thank you. Anyone else?
David Cavender, attorney-at-law. I've had a key or access to this courthouse since 1978. It took me a year before I was given that honor. It is a privilege, and it's a privilege that's not given to the public. As an attorney, I am an officer of the court. We bandy that word around, and if you're not an attorney, it may be difficult to understand. Number one, if I do something incorrect while in the courthouse or in the record room, Ms. Blaney will take my key away. That key enables me to make a living. As an attorney, it takes an hour to an hour and a half to close a loan. You close loans during the day. I need the evening or the weekend in order to do the title work, and I still do my own title work. I'm a dinosaur. That also means to an extent, I don't have a life because I'm in the record room, but it's the profession and career that I chose. If you limit my access, I can't make that living. As Mr. Schuman said, there's never been an incident. I understand security. I understand in this day and age the fear that something's going to happen. All I would ask is, last year, we met with the commission, we have what we thought was a signed agreement, a meeting of the minds, and in regard to the attorneys, that this commission again sat down with the bar and discussed ways that can alleviate your fears and Mr. Kizner's fears, and yet still enable us to make a living. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? At this time, okay? Seeing that there's no one else, we will close comments, we will move to grants and Benetton McDoor.
Just had one grant application today. As you all know well, Mr. Hawkins, the city of Morgantown sponsors a grant, the CDBG, Community Development Block Grant, and MASP is involved in the funding with that. It's the time to renew that. This year, the MASP is asking for eleven thousand nine hundred and thirty-three dollars. This grant will be from July 1st, 2015, June 30th, 2016. Just asking for signature.
Move for approval or authorize the president's decision?
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, it passes.
Our Mon County Adult Drug Court has hired a new caseworker, part-time caseworker. They're not a regular employee, they're a contract employee, so they will be issued a 1099 at the end of, end of accounting year. It's for Brittany Dunbar. We have a memorandum of understanding that the drug court has already signed, and we're just asking for the president's signature on that.
Move to approve but authorize the president's decision?
It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to correspondence. Requisition for payment of the ballpark project?
This is requisition for payment number four in amount of three million six hundred ninety-three thousand three hundred and forty dollars and nineteen cents to pay to the university for the ballpark project from the series 2015A taxable funds.
Move to approve the requisition.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes.
I also have a application and certificate for payment. This is the current payment due on the new federal building, the Justice Center, one million sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and two dollars.
Can't come up with anything less than a million. Move for approval.
Second.
Been properly moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes.
Next, I have a standard letter that the auditor asks us to send to the prosecuting attorney.
Oh, okay.
Advising the commission if there are any pending or threatening litigation claims and assessments against the county for audit purposes or signature.
Does it have a list of them?
No, we're asking her to provide the list.
Oh, we're asking her to provide the list?
Yes.
Move to approve the letter to the prosecutor.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes. Okay, unfinished business, I believe that's why a number of people are here and have already voiced some questions and concerns. Courthouse security policy is the sheriff and...
Sheriff's not here today.
Oh, okay, Chief Palmer?
Yes.
Would, do you want to generally explain, okay, rather, explain basically how we got to this point? This has been going on since about November. There was an agreement, okay, for clarification, there was an agreement in April. Times have changed, and several situations and concerns have been brought to our attention. In November and December, we asked them for a survey to be done, which then the survey was done, then we asked a possibility of a pilot project for ninety days to see what we could do to make, to work out some sort of a safety and security agreement for this building. So that's really where we're at at this time. Is that correct? Is there anything else you want to state?
Other than, again, I'm speaking for the sheriff.
Yes.
Because he's not here today, and he may have some other comments. But we did have the workshop with the sheriff and Gary and Mark and you all.
Right.
And the sheriff assumed that he came to a pretty, pretty decent compromise with the, with the tentative of being able to come in and out of the courthouse on the weekends. The only thing I will stress is, and I understand, I respect all the lawyers here, because I know them all, that not having an incident within the last thirty or forty years is, is really not an excuse to, to have security beefed up a little bit. It is, it is a changing world that we live in, and I understand that they have, they have a job to do, and as Carrie said also, in reference to her people, we just felt, and I'm sure the sheriff feels the same way, that a little bit of inconvenience is, having a little bit of inconvenience to the employees and other people coming into the courthouse is an easier burden to take on than if an incident does happen.
For clarification, since the public doesn't know, could you explain what the change was gonna be about entrance and exit for people coming to the courthouse and also for the employees, so people can understand the difference?
As far as that we were gonna have an entrance to the lower level.
Right.
That we'd have a security officer there from, I believe...
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty to nine, and then again from four, four to, four thirty to five thirty, I believe.
And that was for the employees?
That was for the employees.
Correct.
And also anytime in between that time, they could come, they could go in and out anytime during the day at chancery road. The employees.
Employees.
Yeah.
Okay, so then, okay, just for clarification, so therefore, then what the county clerk was saying is basically, they could not use all the doors?
Correct.
At that time, we won't want them all coming in through one door?
Correct.
Okay. I'm just clarifying.
Right, and that would be an easy, that would be an easier way to, and I understand the access cards, what Carrie's saying about the access cards, however, sometimes people getting in with access cards, people getting in behind them, there's a three or four-minute delay, and that could pose a problem, too.
Okay, now, for the public, what we're, what is the change gonna be made for the public of what we, after we had, it was like eighty-eight, eighty-eight positive that there should be some changes?
Right.
And two against it?
Yes.
Is that correct?
It was, yeah, the, as far as the responses we got?
Yes.
It was ninety-one percent in favor.
Ninety-one percent, and making some changes in response, and what was the change that you were planning to make at this time?
That the, the public would enter the main, the main, the main entrance.
Okay.
And also that we would set up for handicap access on both ends with a, with a call box.
Okay, now, again, this was a recommendation from coming out of a meeting back in, I think in November, December?
Correct.
Of different options when we had our workshop and so on.
Correct.
I knew you wasn't there, but...
If I may...
Yeah, go ahead.
This was all brought about because of the Jody Hunt Incident. That's why the whole thing came. The Jody Hunt Incident, that's why this whole thing came up again, and it's, it's been on the work session two or three times. So I just wanted to include the chronology. The question was, why did this come up? That's why it came up, because of the Jody Hunt Incident. I, I don't know, I, I guess I still live in a la-la land of good old Morgantown where everyone knew everybody and everyone patted each other on the back, and everyone said hello to everybody, and if, on your way home, if you did something wrong, mama knew about it before you got there, and you got your butt whacked a few times for doing something bad. That's, that's the Morgantown I grew up in and still wish was here. But that's, that, you'd ask the question where it came from, that's where it came from. I have, I have been...
Not at this time.
I have been...
I'm saying a word.
Please sit down.
I have been, I have been very much opposed to a lot of this now, and... I have been, I have been very much opposed to a lot of this now, and they know it. And I appreciate their respect that they've displayed for my opinion, that this building belongs to the people. And especially belongs to the lawyers who work in here, because it's, you're, maybe you're not paid by the county, but you're much an employee of this system of county government than anyone is. And especially when it comes to the record room. I mean, that's more the, yeah, the clerk's record room, she's custodian, but the reality is, the lawyers are as protective as the clerk is to make sure that everything is proper and handled, because you know the mess that it could create for your client. So from my, from my perspective, I, well, the Chancery Road for the employees was a compromise. It was originally, everyone, everyone went through the front door, period.
Correct.
And exited through the front door, period. But I thought it was more proper that the employees come into a different entrance than have to go through, just because of the problems that generates when you have three or four people waiting to go through. And, you know, at some point, you're gonna, security's gonna say, well, go on, because you gotta get to work. And then you're gonna have people saying, why do they get to go through, and I don't get to, you know, you've seen all that. But I just wanted to take this opportunity, and I didn't mean to cut you off from your presentation.
You're exactly right.
As to how, as to how we got here.
And we did, as a compromise, and also as a trial thing, a pilot thing. So if it needs altered or changed or whatever, you guys have the final say, as far as that.
Did you want to say something still?
I would. I feel personally, since an agreement was reached, even though I wasn't a party to the agreement, to implement another policy without involving the people who were involved in the original agreement would be improper. That's my personal feeling, and I will stick to that.
Along that line, we just had a work session last week. And the survey was a big thing, and I mean, the surveys were overwhelming that they wanted this building locked down. Now, I never thought about after hours, personally, when the public's not coming in. I still have, and I expressed to you all before, I have a problem with that. I don't know how many times I've been on my way to Charleston, leaving the house, and taking that bill I need, that I've marked up, it's sitting on my desk. Well, if the lawyers and the other employees aren't allowed to come in here, I'm certainly not allowed to come in here. And so that, so that creates a problem with that. And that, many things that our clerk Carrie Blaney's brought up, creates a problem. So I still have a problem with that. I'm only a single vote, but I still have a problem. But I also understand the sheriff, and maybe you all can address that, because I brought that up in our work session, as to why you feel a need to seal things off hours. Can you address that, sir?
Well, I think, I think his point was, and our point was, that if we had those certain hours on the weekend, we would have a court security officer there, assigned to them those four hours on each day. I'm sure, again, I won't speak for the sheriff, because he's on air, but I'm sure if it goes back to unlimited, which is up to you all, we don't have the manpower to do that at all. I mean, that won't, that won't be, we will not be able to have somebody there all day. And again, I know it comes back to, well, they never had any, they haven't had anybody in the past, so why would they now? It's just the idea of trying to get security a little bit more beefed up, because, again, I keep saying, times have changed.
One of the requests I had was the copy that's be sent to the bar. I got an email from Dan Oliver this morning, said that the bar never received us.
I don't know exactly who the sheriff had sent it out to, I'm not sure. I thought it was supposed to go to all the county...
You didn't receive it until what?
I didn't receive it until yesterday.
Oh, really?
It was attached to the agenda. I had never seen this prior to it being...
Well...
I understand that I didn't receive it until it was attached to the agenda.
Maybe, because we wanted everyone to be active participants in this. It wasn't like we were trying to push something through, we didn't intend to.
Well, okay. A couple of things, let's separate the two issues, because Carrie Blaney brings up a really good questions. And we have to separate the issues from security and safety of the building and the attorney situation and after hours. So we need to separate the two. The suggestion that a concern has been brought up is that it's an inconvenience for the employees to go through the doors. I'm sorry, but this is probably the most open courthouse in the country. And I'm very concerned that we don't at least have some basic procedures of security. And I don't really foresee a problem with people coming in the front door and the compromise, everyone else in between those hours coming through that other door. That is something that I think is a real legitimate compromise, and they will then be walking, if that door happens to open up and there is someone else behind them, we've now resolved that problem because they're coming by where those officers are. That also resolves the problem and issue about having extra policemen needed to have, worry about down in the tax office, because we're still gonna have one on the first floor, but you don't have people opening and closing that door and running in and out. So that, that's a separate issue, and that's what we'd like to try for 90 days. That was the compromise that was brought up. So I want to use that part of it, okay? The second part is a legitimate concern. Yes, my phone was ringing. Christine Wang had me on all last night, talking about the agreement. There's a problem and a question, because I called Bill Bartola up last night to verify what the agreement was. The agreement was extra hours for these 32 individuals to have access during certain hours. And then what they were to call Mr. White, if I'm correct, to say that they were in the building. It was never, ever proposed 24 hours. And Bill Bartola made sure, and I remember that. That was a clarification. We tried to limit the hours to make it amenable to you, and that's what we did. What I'm seeing, this recommendation, whether right or wrong, and then I'll let anyone else speak, Steve, I'll let you, you speak at that time, was to modify the hours to make it more secure, not for you all, but for the building's sake. And as Carrie Blaney said, this, I'll use her words, Morgantown is getting more dangerous. So what has happened is, we now have to protect the building, the people in it, and those who come in the building. So that's what we have an issue. Now, what I did ask for, though, was some clarification of numbers. And what I have here is a report since November of everyone who's used the facility and used the cards. Just for clarification, during the past six weeks, we had only 12 to 15 lawyers use them off hours, and they used them a total of 35 times. 75% of the time was between 6:30 and 7:30 in the morning. What I was shocked was only eight times in the last six weeks was it used on Saturday and Sunday. Only eight times. So I understand that we do not, as a commission, want to hurt your livelihood. But there's a difference between hurting your livelihood and only eight times in 48 hours for six weeks. So that's a little different. From the ones who spoke, one of you have not used the card at all in the last four months. The other individuals only used it five times in six weeks, and only one time on Saturday and Sunday. So I want to clarify, we're trying to come up with a compromise. What the sheriff has asked for is five hours, let me look at that. Again, I'm not promoting, and I'm just saying what they're stating, and they have a legitimate argument. Every first and third, Saturday and Sunday, 8 to 12. And every second and fourth, Saturday and Sunday, from 1 to 5, with people here and the building secure. I think that is an enormous compromise. Unfortunately, one of the phone calls I got was from a person who was with a realty agency. And their question was, well, if you have a right to come in, they wanted to be able to come in and get an access card. And I said, so what we've been trying to do is equalize access and make it amenable for everyone. Now, I agree with Commissioner Callen. This was not going to go into effect till the 15th. What we wanted to do is exactly what happened, which is now we've got everyone's attention. I mean, I believe Commissioner Callen, you know, also stated, and Hawkins, that maybe several groups need to get back together to look at that. However, things have changed. I'm sorry. And I believe I have a responsibility first for the employees here and the people who come in this courthouse. I believe the commissioners under statute are required to do that. We don't have what they brought in last time. It was over 150 knives, weapons, that we had brought in that people voluntarily gave to us when you, when they asked it, they just happened to ask them, do you have that kind of, are you carrying that kind of equipment? So we really don't know what's going on. What we're hoping to do is twofold. Security, and then also work out a compromise so the lawyers can work, and also we would have a security person there. That's generally what I'd like to say. Sure, and then Mr. Schuman wants to speak.
I just want to address one thing, so the attorneys in the room don't have to.
Yeah.
Yeah. People that are not attorneys believe that they should have the same mentality to access and everything, but the attorneys or officers of the court does have a meaning and significance of great magnitude. And everyone likes to make fun of attorneys, but they spend a lot of time, a lot of dedication, and you can have crazy anyone. You could have a crazy attorney, you could have a crazy engineer, you could have a crazy dentist, you could have a crazy guidance counselor.
That's right. That's right.
That's, that's a reality. But in terms of other people saying, well, I'm a realty company, therefore, I'm entitled to have the same access as an attorney, that on its face is false, because an attorney is a very different class to citizen. And they are officers of the court, and we should respect that. So I wanted to address that issue.
Thank you. Mr. Schuman, I apologize, I just wanted to get everything done, and then I was going to open back up, and I know you didn't realize that. Feel free to speak now.
You've got to remember, the majority of the attorneys with access to the record room, there are probably two different classes. One is an order class, who's used to work on Saturdays and Sundays in there. And then you have a younger class who's coming up, and it needs the time to be able to generate the work and do the closings. You've got to remember now, November, December, January, and February are your slow months. I'd like to have you go back six months ago, to a year ago, when I worked every Saturday and Sunday in there for almost six months. So there is a difference. It depends what kind of projects you're doing, it depends on the time of year. The house selling season is going to start in another month or so. Then there's refinancing, then these attorneys are going to be busy and will need this time to be able to get their projects done and things closed.
Okay. Then that makes sense, okay.
And, maybe I've beaten a dead horse, but for 40 years, there's never been an incident on a Saturday or Sunday in that record room. I don't know why you think this select group of 32 is now going to cause an incident. I mean, that's what I see it going down to.
Well, that was, that was the question that I posed to the sheriff, and Chief Palmer tried to answer that, as to why are we concerned about the building when it's locked down other than access by the authorized attorney and the employees? And he wanted to answer to that. Chief, do you recall his answer? I don't want to, I don't want to put words in his mouth. Well, maybe Captain Rolston, you or Gary.
Or Gary, you remember what the answer...
Do you remember what the answer to that question? Because I asked that specific question, why are we doing that?
Some of the discussion, particularly after we got the access printout from Bobby, when we were talking about this, it wasn't just the attorneys, it was employees in general. Those cards tell us who the card was issued to, but not actually who came in to the building. That was one of the things that was, that was mentioned during the work session. And the one thing that you did speak about as far as us having security here, the compromise and the reason, and particularly, like from Carrie's standpoint, why Chancery Road Door was chosen when we were all speaking, we're going to have three staff members there within sight of that door. No other door in this courthouse, we're going to have that other than the main entrance and that site. And that's just, it's not the inconvenience to anyone, it's just to make sure where people are coming and going, we have somebody there watching. That's it. It wasn't to make it difficult for anyone.
And also, just to add to that, Commissioner, by no means was the sheriff saying that he thought one of the 32 who were saying access was going to be a problem. Or none of the employees either, that wasn't what it was.
Right, right. He, I remember now, I was trying to remember what it was. It was, it was a review of who was coming in and out of this courthouse and how they were coming in and out. And the question, as Captain Rolston just said, was, you know, you have these cards, and it tells you what card came in, it doesn't necessarily tell you what person comes in.
Correct.
And or, and I know, I have a hard time, because I personally, I just like the way it is. I leave it alone. I just have a hard time with, everyone knows it, so I'm not telling you anything. But I, but I respect, I expect their opinions. But one of the, one of the things that really, it is this fear, especially from a couple of the judges, that believe that they're going to blow, someone's going to come in and blow up this whole building. They're convinced that they're going to set a bomb underneath their courthouse, or their courtroom and blow them up. I mean, they're really, they're terrifying. And they've expressed that. Personally, I'm of the opinion, and I've said, you know, if someone wants to blow up this courthouse, they could put a truck right, pull a truck right in there between the sheriff and the court. They'd bring the whole courthouse down in about 10 minutes. So, so, but we're also, that's why we did the survey. And the survey was overwhelmingly that we are not doing the right thing. Well, basically, I'm not doing the right thing by standing by my belief that we ought to just leave everything open, but I wanted to express that.
And for clarification, I mean, and since Eldon mentioned it, the Jody Hunt situation exposed enormous weaknesses in this courthouse when it happened. We had judge come down, very concerned, we had several other people. I just happened to be the individual here. Eldon was coming back, we were trying to get a hold, we were making sure he was okay, and Bill was in the hospital. So we had to take action, and I can tell you that it was very clear with the doors being open, that people had open access, there was problems. And we felt that we needed to look and see how we could improve the situation. That came with the recommendations, the workshop. I understand you had it, we had an agreement, but things changed. And I believe you're right. I believe what we could do is go back and have that group meet again, but there's a difference this time. Before, and I was in those meetings, and every time they said, well, that happened in Pittsburgh. That happened there, that will never happen here. And that was the comments that were said. Things have changed. We've had some situations where the judges have made it very clear that people have come in and threatened them. We've had some things along those kind of lines. So all we're trying to do is bring us in the 21st century, as other courthouses are doing. And I believe it's just, I realize this is supposed to be for the people, but so is the school system. And they have clearly had a lot more lockdown on the school system than here. So what we're hoping to do, I mean, again, it's up to three people of what you want to do. Oh, how do you want to go?
I'm ready to do something.
Okay, what we do?
Unless someone has, whoever has something else to say.
I'll stand by me, we're doing a statement.
Okay, but, yeah, go ahead, I'll stand.
May I just address a couple of follow-up things?
Sure, go ahead.
Before you call for the question, please.
Sure.
Mr. Commissioner Blaney, you made the comment that there were several situations and concerns. I'll call it another question.
Yes.
That came up after the agreement was made in April.
Yes.
I'm sorry. I've not been privileged to have any information on this situation and concerns if they've related to the operation of the record room.
Okay, there's a difference between the operation of the... Well, okay, there's a difference between the operation of the record room and the operation of the courthouse. You're interpreting that we were trying to control the operate, we're controlling the entrance and exit and security of the courthouse. There's a difference. So, I just want to get that clarification.
Certainly, and I agree with you. And one of the suggestions that I would make
Sure.
as a compromise to this proposal, because I do believe that everyone understands that, as I said before, Morgantown is not as safe of a city as what we once lived in and we have enjoyed for many years. The compromise I would submit to you would be
Okay.
to limit the access to the public, to the general public through one entrance and exit.
Okay.
Part of the, you made the comment about the agreement for the attorneys.
Right.
I do have a signed agreement from Commissioner Bartolo that he made with those attorneys. And as a matter of fact, it was twenty-four hour access. The only caveat to that was on page two, under two A. Anyone who was going to be in the record room prior to nine AM or after five PM was to give a courtesy call to Gary White to let him know. Because it was discussed during this agreement that nine to five was daylight operating hours. And that way, if there was going to be someone there before nine, at least someone at the sheriff's department was aware of it and after five. But I want to come back, the, the issue with the attorneys is a separate issue in my book.
Right.
The, I want to come back to the issue with county employees. And I'm assuming that elected officials are considered in the same group.
Yes.
My issue with Chancery Row is not one of inconvenience. And I sort of get offended that you feel that, I'm not saying that it's an inconvenience to go in one door and out another. I think it's a safety issue going out, forcing the employees to go out Chancery Row if they're here after five o'clock. There will not be any women stationed after five o'clock in the evening. I have staff that stay until sometimes eight or nine o'clock, as I said. I believe you have staff here that stays after five o'clock. It is very dangerous to walk down Chancery Row. Any woman who has ever worked in this building knows that if Chancery Row gets a little bit wet, it is a very slick street to walk on. You have to walk down that, walk down Chestnut Street. It's not a matter of inconvenience. It's a matter of safety. I think that, again, the key card access did exactly what key card access is intended to do. It allows us to monitor who enters and who exits this building. If we feel, and I'm going to say we as an elected official, has hired an employee and I feel that that employee has earned the right or the ability, has proven themselves to me to have key card access, they are very well aware, at least I'm going to speak for the employees under my administration, that no one enters and exits that building under their key card. Nobody else uses that key card, same as the attorneys, except the person that it was issued to. And I have a no tolerance policy about that. Now, I cannot speak for other administrators who have cards issued out. But I take it, I take it very seriously and I think that some respect ought to be given to the other employees. In the proposal that is, has been brought forth, it says, "Because of the nature of their business in any county facility, maintenance personnel is permitted to enter and exit any door necessary to complete their assigned task." If you are going to select a certain group of employees to be able to enter and exit, then I would, I would ask that you give the same respect and the same credence to any other employee that has key card access in this building, elected officials included. I work very unorthodox hours some days. I'm in here very early in the morning on a Saturday or a Sunday. I've seen many of the attorneys who are here on a Saturday or a Sunday working so they can vouch that I am here too when they are. And I pull into the sheriffs in between the buildings because it is the closest entrance and exit to the front door of the county clerk's office. And I don't see a problem with continuing to operate under that key card access. I, I would assume that if you agree to this proposal as it is written, that all key card access is going to be removed from every person?
No. No, just that.
Then how are you going to monitor?
We're going to put a key access over there.
So, you're going to remove key access from every other door?
For the ninety day, I can't answer. Yes, okay, yes. Wait, just for, okay, could, could you explain that?
Yeah, there, we didn't have any discussion on removing key card access during this trial period at all.
No.
This was just going to try the entrances and exits as the proposal stated and see how it worked. There, we never discussed anything about pulling in key card access from anyone at that point.
Okay, before you speak, can I have one quick question? Are you separating the issue from people, you don't have a problem, it's the way you spoke, you didn't have a problem, people coming in up until five o'clock or leaving. You're saying after five o'clock. That's what you're stating. Because you're, that's two different issues again.
Right.
So, I want to get clear.
What my suggestion would be is to have one entrance and exit, and if you're going to have that off of the main courthouse proper, I'm assuming, the front steps to the courthouse, is that where your, your main entrance and exits want to be?
Correct.
For the general public, allow the employees to have key card access to enter and exit during this trial, during your trial period, to enter and exit any door just like they have been regardless of where they park or whatever. Allow the attorneys to continue to operate under the agreement that they reached with the county commission. And so that the only thing you're trying under this trial period is locking down the public portion of the building during normal operating hours. That will allow you, number one, to see if there is any incidents that transpire. If you pick up on anybody bringing any unauthorized substances or materials into the courthouse, it will allow the employees to function as they have already functioned. Now, if an employee doesn't have a key card, then they can't enter and exit. They have to go through the main door. But if they have a key card authorized by their administrative official, then they, they are responsible. If they let a, a general public taxpayer come in, then they will lose their privileges to having that, the key card access. It's very simple. And, and let the attorneys continue to operate under their agreement. And let's take a look then at the end of that time period and see how well that works. Because I think that is a big step. And you are still accomplishing the goal that you wanted to accomplish, which is making one entrance and one exit for the general public coming in and out of that building.
Okay. Thank you.
Can, can I make a public comment?
Sure. If you, if you say your name.
Yeah, stay behind me. My name's Steve Morris. I live at ten twenty-six Bakers Ridge Road in Morgantown, West Virginia.
Okay.
I've been listening to this conversation and I know you probably have a problem with security here, but you also have technology in the community that you can learn to use to solve these problems for you. You have one of the best identification labs in the country going on over here for facial recognition, fingerprint recognition, blood veins in your hand. That type of security, you know who entered, who left. It's positive ID and allows you to allow your employees to come in anywhere they want. They'll be registered in that database. Now, you know, I know as a layperson or just one of the general public, "Yeah, I need to come through the front door and you need to check me. Maybe I got a bomb. I'm going to blow the place up." But you cost yourselves a lot of money when you start restricting these employees, putting unnecessary load of work on the, the law enforcement, which they don't have the resources to do, when you have some of the best technology available to you anywhere, right here under your noses. And you need to make some kind of agreement with those technologies to show that off. Try to get in the forefront. Like she talks about access to the courtrooms. How come everything you have isn't scanned and on the internet? You know how much time that would take away for people needing to enter this courthouse at all days and hours? The records are just sitting there getting old. The digital standards there that this can be accepted to do that. Those are some of the kind of things I, as a person in the community, would like to see the county do. You need to be a more, a little more progressive. We need to lead a little more. We have a university. Let's try to integrate ourselves instead of being separated. I don't want to bash your head.
Well, thank you very much. Yes.
I just wanted one comment. If we do continue that after hours, employees are required to exit Chancery Row, then I would like for a security check to be done of an evening. I would like for someone to walk, walk that area at night just for the lighting. Because it's not an, I'm, I'm with Kerry. It's not an inconvenience. I'll walk out any door of this building that you want me to. But it is a slope that you have to walk down and it is dark. So, if, if the lighting could be looked into, I would appreciate that. But that's the exit that we're...
Okay. Um, yes, sir.
Just to clear up one thing, I, I can print out two enters this building, but I cannot print out two exits this building. State fire marshal will not let you lock this building down to where you need a card access to get out. It's a public building and it has to have egress out of this building. So, I cannot lock it down to where nobody connects it out these doors. I just want everybody to know that.
Does it, uh... Does, does it tell you where the door opens?
It does, but it, it doesn't tell you who goes out it.
No, I, I know, but I, I'm saying like on the weekend, if, if someone comes in on a... It will also tell you that the door opened again, right, at a later time?
It will tell you, yeah, then you'll have to look at the camera and see if somebody come in behind somebody.
Okay.
That's, I mean, but it's only a three-second delay that if an employee would come in any exit, that the door locks behind them three seconds if they're not in the eye of that motion detector on the exit door. If you stand in front of that, it's going to stand open all night.
Oh, really?
Okay, we've heard both sides very passionate and very understanding. What would the three of us like to do?
I th, I like Kerry's suggestion a lot in terms of during this trial period and the implementation and, and split this up into, you know, public access and then, and then leave, leave the employee and, and the egress. However, I, I hesitate to, to do anything but table this at least until next week because there's a, I have a concern that people did not get proper notice. And that was, that was the key. And, and it's nobody's fault to be properly, whatever happened to happen. The reality is that, that we need, for this to work, the sheriff's department and our chief bailiff, Gary White, and our facilities director, Bob Doyle, they all, they've all got to work with each of the officials, each of the departments, each of the offices, as well as the bar. We, we wanted them to work with the bar. So, now notice is out. Now people have stuff. So, at, at this day and time, I, I would move to table this for at least one week or until, until the sheriff and/or Chief Gary White could inform us that they have had consultations with the bar and all elected officials about the implementation of this and suggestions, whichever is later.
I will second that.
Okay, there's a motion to table, but since we've never actually accepted it, if the maker would be willing to just say, "We could bring it back next week" on the basis that there would be a meeting between those parties.
Oh, oh.
See what I'm saying? So, there'd be...
Okay, well, that's why I put a motion is because I wanted the meeting.
Oh, oh, okay. Then, then that's fine, since you wanted the meeting. Okay.
Because I wanted, I wanted to
Gotcha.
ask them to make sure their meets when they come back, they can say, "I have met and talked with the bar and all the officials."
Okay. Um, the question is, all I'm asking is that we want to look at this and move forward on this. What happened before is it took weeks to get that meeting together. So, I'm requesting if that could be done between now and next Wednesday to have that meeting. Yes, sir.
Commissioner, would it be a better idea to have a workshop here with all the elected officials and the lawyer? So, you guys would be here and then the sheriff would be here and you would get it all, so...
That's a great, that's a great idea.
Want to do it next week?
Let's, we'll do it at the work session next week.
We'll just put it on work session this week. We'd like the bar association and
Okay.
and all the elected officials and department heads.
Do we have a time, Diane, that we could, how's one o'clock looking? Yeah, we're going to look at the calendar, then we'll be, I think that's a great suggestion.
Okay, why don't, why don't I do this if, if Commissioner Hocken will draw his second.
I withdraw.
I withdraw my motion and we'll just, we won't take a motion at this time, but just schedule the workshop as Chief Perry Palmer asks.
And we're trying to clarify that it's two separate issues. So, we need to understand that, you know, and that's what we're, we're going to be working on. Two separate issues.
Well, actually, three separate issues.
Yes.
I think, I think you have three separate issues.
Employees?
Number one is, is public ingress and egress.
Okay.
Two, the employees during the day. And three, the attorneys and employees after hours.
Correct.
We have a one-thirty schedule. Do you want to do it at one?
Let's do two o'clock, two o'clock. Okay, we're going to put that on next Wednesday at two o'clock. We will meet in here and again, it's an informal meeting to work out some solutions to that. Is everyone?
What time do you say?
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock?
Is that okay?
What day?
Two o'clock next Wednesday.
What, what's the date?
That's the eleventh.
Eleven.
I think so, yeah.
Okay, good. Or if you could have some representatives. I mean, if the, those people could have some representatives. I think that's a great idea. And we'll break it in three areas.
The president of the bar was guilty today. That's why.
Yeah, that'll, yeah.
She can't, she's had surgery, I'm told.
Oh, okay.
And not available.
So, we'll be dealing with three separate issues and what I, and let's, let's try, let's put it for an hour. So, we don't talk for five hours.
Is there enough here that everyone is notified and don't feel like?
Well, well, the attorneys take, take responsibility to make sure the bar association identifies. Thank you.
And we'll send a letter out to our elected officials and, um, and you know what, I, if possible, I would like to see if there were several, not only elected officials, but there are some actual employees who'd be willing to sit in.
That's why I said.
Yeah, and so, you know, so we could have some. Okay. So, we'll agree, we'll do that at two o'clock. I thank you for coming and I think this will work out. And hopefully, I, I believe everyone wants the same thing. We just have to figure out how to get, get it resolved. Okay, great. Thank you. Let's get this, okay. Employee discount for park reservations. Let's talk about something that we're not going to fight over. Maybe not.
This is for just the council to allow discount to employees
Okay.
using county facilities. They would have to be part of the function to be allowed to get the discount and rent it for your neighbor.
I, I, I believe that, I believe that this, this is a benefit that we should give to our employees. So many of our employees accept lower salaries than they could earn out in private industry, both for the commitment to, to work for the public, but also, but, but also the, the, the benefits and service that they provide. So, I would, I would move that we would approve these county employee discounts on county-owned park facilities as drafted here.
Couple of second, I need to state for the record that it is discounts only to rental rates of the facility above two county holidays. It's full-time twenty percent, part-time five or 10 percent.
It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Great. Okay. Now, we're at amendments and adoption of tow policy. Another non-divisive issue.
Here, Captain, you're a busy man today.
Yeah, really.
Um, I believe that Tammy got up copies to you yesterday and I believe all the commissioners may have copies.
What was done since we last met, the, the one thing that Commissioner Callen had mentioned about the... about the officer on the scene requesting specialized equipment, it was removed and that will be up to the towing agency.
Thank you very much.
Who's much better equipped to know what kind of equipment they're gonna be needing. And the one federal guideline, um, through the FCC about scanning, that there is a copy towards the back that was actually signed by President Callan at that time, September 10th of 2014 was added, is actually in the policy as well. And that's really the only new amendments that you have not seen prior to this that was done at your request. Also in the packet are the checklist that the compliance officer will use when they go to inspect the wreckers and the businesses. All these are gonna be provided, um, upon your adoption. We will be getting ahold of each wrecker company that's currently on the list and letting them know to come into our office. There'll be a packet for each company, the representative can sign. That way we can have a signed copy of the policy for them in their individual file. And that will have everything that the officer, the, the compliance officer will have as far as a checklist, what the policy contains, so they'll know exactly what they need to have on hand.
How does...
Let me, let me ask one question here. Uh, Mark, uh, one of the things, one of the things I wanted in here, but I don't see it in here, was the reports that Mecca was to give both you and the commission on a recurring basis.
Is that in the Mecca portion or not? Let me...
Uh, 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 some of it looks like part of it is, but the, the report... It had to do with the compliance officer, but the, the reports that you and the commission was supposed to get...
From the 911.
From 911. Uh, Mike had, uh, a list of those. I know Diane gave, I, I know Diane gave it to you, I thought. Do you recall that? Am I right, Diane? Uh, the Mike Wolf had you.
It does say maintain a business file on all towing services.
Is that the list that Mike gave, uh, Diane?
I, no, I don't have that.
That's what Mike, uh, comments Mike has.
Those were, were the agreements we reached when we met with the tow that would be proper reports that should come to both the commission and to you to monitor that the, the policies are being properly followed.
Okay, so the, what, for wording in this, what is the, that report that they're gonna send down? What is it gonna contain?
Did you get a report, Ray? Do you not get a report from some kind of Mecca?
No, we do not, unless I call up and request. If we have a complaint on a company, then I'll call up and get the details. But we don't routinely get any kind of a report, like how many toes were, were used this past month or in this quarter.
Yeah.
Nothing of that nature.
Add to 911 call notes if there was urgent request, and which officer requested and the reason. Owners request to be documented on a separate list. Put out weekly list of companies of large wrecker rotation. Add to policy, no out-of-county records. Those were, those were the things that he had listed. And I think he was going to, I don't see it on this list, but I, I, on his handwritten list, I think it said he was going to submit reports to you and to the commission quarterly as to the performance of the, the tow, uh, rotation.
See, okay, that would be, now on one of, in the policy under Mecca's obligation, the last thing on that page include in CAD, which is the, uh, the dispatching...
Well, maybe that...
Incident responding wrecker service.
Renata might have the answer.
The next that I took, it said that Mike will send an updated wrecker list every Monday morning and that each wrecker company was to give Mike, uh, their email or fax number so that they could...
Right, that's for the rotation list to the companies, right. This was the, the quarterly reports that the commissioners and Captain Rolston could review to see if there, the, uh, see if there's any anomaly. The question was, that, and the issue was that there are certain people that are scanning. And one of the things that I brought up is the only way you're gonna prove that without catching them red-handed, listening, which you're not, uh, is, uh, through circumstantial evidence. The only way to develop circumstantial evidence is to review the reports from 911. So that's where the reporting, the reporting came from. So that there is, so if there is, um, and, and, oh, before I lose my train of thought, is that, is that in this, what, what Renata just read?
The, no, the report, like this quarterly report is not in this policy.
How about, how about the, the wrecker rotation? I thought I saw that in...
Yeah, it's, yeah.
That was in there.
That, that, I saw that in there and the business file that Commissioner Hawkins mentioned.
Yes.
Okay, the, the only thing, I, I, I wanna adopt this.
Now, the one...
We can amend it, yeah.
The, the one, as far as this quarterly report, if the intent of having that is to maybe see if a wrecker company, if there was a complaint that came in, those complaints come to us, not to the 911 center. And oftentimes, we do not get those till two, three, four days later. A wrecker company will call us and say, "Hey, I just wanna let you know, three or four days ago, there were two other wrecker companies that weren't dispatched on this call." The 911 center isn't even gonna know about that. They're actually not part of that investigation process for enforcing this policy.
I'm getting some of the calls myself, saying, "Well, last weekend, you know what they did."
Yeah, they're not gonna have that information at the time of the call. So it's never gonna be in there from Mike Devapool. If you understand what I'm saying. They're actually not in that complaint loop.
Yeah, it's catch 22.
Yeah, yeah. Now, what we can do is any complaints that our compliance officer gets, now that's something that we can do quarterly very easily for you.
I, I would like to have that.
And, and then, yeah.
Why don't we do, why don't we do that?
And then you won't have a whole bunch of unneeded information.
When you get a complaint, you call for that report.
Yes, then we get the details, who was on the call, who made the call, and that would be in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
So let, let's do it this way, I, I appreciate that, Diane. Um, let, let's, let's do it this way. Let, let's, uh, I want to, to make this policy effective. Now, it's, uh, it says right at the top, this policy is in effect, it's 1/2015.
That was what, as we discussed.
That's what, that's what you, that's what you want, I just wanna make, make sure for, for, uh...
That gives, that gives nearly two months for the wrecker companies to, to know what they're...
Yes. Okay, um, I would, I would move that we adopt this, uh, uh, towing policy as drafted and add with the addition of a note that all, all complaints and, uh, uh, the re, the, um, data gathered and the information, uh, completed by, uh, the Sheriff's Department would be submitted to commissioners on a quarterly basis.
That will, that will second that, yes.
Does that work for you, Mark?
Yeah, that, that'll be very simple for us to do.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? It passes.
We got, finally, finally got an official...
Finally got an official tow policy.
Do you just add that paragraph here?
Yeah, I'll have, I'll have Tammy do that and then there'll be the final one in the packet. That'll be easy, it'll be under the compliance officer section and then we'll give you guys a copy of that.
Other, on item D, I just wanna add because I know I would like my, to fill in the other county commissioners, what's going on deep, the recycling issue. And I have like a little bit of a report and then if we want to discuss it. Um, I'd like to provide an update on recycling in Mon County. The program restarted as single stream on Sunday, February 5th. February 1st, the Republic, I'm gonna give this, I'll Xerox this off so you two don't have to write it all down. Um, basically, we understand the problem. The problem is, it's going so well and by moving to single stream, we had people putting material on the ground and it was overflowing. And that's the Cliff Notes version and we wanted to come up with an actual plan. And I'll explain what the recommendation Jamby and I have worked on. Okay? The commission undertook the recycling duty from the Solid Waste Authority even though it was under no obligation to do so. The commission believed and still does believe that Mon County needs recycling and has swiftly implemented a plan to save it in our community after brief hiatus. There are obviously growing pains with this temporary service provided by Republic. We, as a commission, will never to resolve these issues. It should be noted, however, that the commission is dealing with legacy issues such as upset business owners from overflowing bins and litter strewn on the ground as well as new site locations. The community's understanding is appreciated during this recycling transition time. I ask that the people focus their time and energy on constructive feedback so that we can bolster and improve the recycling in Mon County. The community is welcome to reach out to the commission if they can suggest or offer up alternative drop-off sites in residential or commercial locations or other insights for the success of the recycling program. I am optimistic about the future of the recycling program in our county. I'm also thankful for my fellow commissioners who are diligently working to devise a longer-term recycling solution that might be a model for and include other counties in North Central West Virginia. Their patience is greatly appreciated as we work together for a more permanent recycling solution. What, first, and I also wanna thank Jamby and those individuals. We've worked the last three days cleaning up sites to give you an idea how much material. 700 pounds of recycling material at one site and 800 pounds at the other site. I mean, that's just on the ground that we picked up. So again, um, there is a big interest. What we have done since we've lost to Cheat Lake, as we speak right now, we are moving all eight of those bins from Cheat Lake and Mount near Mall to the Walmart site. I wanna give credit to Walmart. They have met with them, we met with them and they were very adamant on trying to get this program to work. They're willing to put all 12 bins over in one area and there is security and cameras there. What, what I am asking now the county commissioners, with your permission, is for us to pay for some signage to explain, clarify the situation that we may, after we know a couple days, whether we have to go up to four more bins, the flexibility of having four more bins. I'm also asking, with your permission, for the next several days to have pickups. Every day to clear this up and then starting Monday, we would go to what we had agreed to two times. There may be another cost. And again, I wanna clear, the county residents are not paying like the city residents are. We are doing this out of what the commissioners believe is an important service and we wanna get this under control. I believe because of the excitement and because of the single stream, so many people are putting it in there. The one problem we need to work on and that's, will be in our signage. In the old bins, you had the flat and the cardboard to get them in. Problem is, and it's physics, it's real simple. If you take a two-by-three box, which is six square feet, and then you drop it in and leave it like that, it takes up six square feet rather than two inches. So that's the one big area we're working on. I believe, and this is the great news, we checked all the sites this morning. Everyone was full, but there wasn't anything on the ground. So I think we've turned the corner and I'm asking permission with the commissioners to show that we do believe in this program to allow, and again, it's really Jamby who's gonna order the four more bins if needed. We're gonna allow these extra with signage and see how it works out from there. And it's all in one area. If we can expand it at a later date, fine. And again, this is only a temporary solution. So with your permission, I would be...
Have you found out how much more it's gonna cost us?
It'll cost us $187 per bin and we haven't found out the pickup, but since it's all in one location, it should not be that much. And in fact, one of the things I'm gonna ask and we're gonna negotiate is that we've moved it from three sites, so it's saving gas and mileage and time and it'll all be there. So I'm hoping that it'll be very nominal.
Oh, that's, that's right, that's a good point. Are, are they gonna just, uh...
Dump it right there and then put it right back?
I mean, are they gonna adjust our, our agreement to show that they're gonna pick it up from one?
We have, we have it already discussed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna sit back down, but we wanna have that flexibility.
I wanna know whatever it costs.
Yeah, we wanna have that flexibility.
I, I called Dave Smith this morning.
Yes.
But he hasn't called me back. Has, I've looked at my phone for a while, so...
And I will say Republic, you know, is also going through some phases where we're learning too. And I did send them some of the pictures and Dave's been calling back as soon as we've gotten information that did come out. So I'm asking with flexibility that you give Jamby the right and I'd be more than willing to work with them to make sure and then we'll come back with the report.
I've gotta commend you for going out there and picking up that. I, I mean, it, it, it's really, it's really sad...
It is.
That people and businesses, and I, I would suspect there's a lot of businesses...
Yes, we called them while we were there.
That are doing that, that, uh, find a good way to get rid of stuff quickly. But, you know, the, the, the people, I, I, I've been a big earth person, protect the earth person gone back 20, 30 years. Uh, I, I, I just, I, I, I would find it very strange for the individuals who are committed to, uh, uh, green, clean earth are the ones that are dumping outside of the, the containers. I, I, I do not, I can't connect those two, uh, the, the vision of those two. So I'm convinced that most of that illegal dumping, and that's what it is. And maybe we need to, to emphasize that he's got citation rights too. He can start citing people if he catches the businesses dumping it and, and, uh... But, but I, uh, I, I, but not only do I, I, I move to authorize you and Jamby to, to make these adjustments and these hours, uh, but in that motion, I commend you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Yes, I would like to second and the same way, Tom's done an admirable job. We'd also like to thank the Wolfs, we'd like to thank the other individuals, uh, the, the Mount near Mall. We understand the concerns that they had, but still, uh, you know, it was an honest effort and the fact that they gave this consideration and hopefully maybe a reconsideration in the future. If we get this to where it's a streamlined operation, perhaps we can address that. With that, I say...
It's been properly moved in second and I do wanna thank also WVAQ, Kevin Conley. I wanna thank, uh, WAJR. They've been, they've been advocates for our program and they continue to be. And please, Sunshine, please pass that on to them. I, I'm very appreciative of what they've been doing. So probably moved in second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Again, no...
May, may, may I, may I...
Yeah, go ahead.
This, this is my fault.
Okay.
Okay? If I could have leave the other two commissioners. Uh, Mr. Morris wanted to talk about the Republic issue. I forgot.
I'm sorry, okay.
I forgot to, I forgot to tell him that we moved the public comment to the front. So that's why, that's why he, he relates, so with your...
With no problem, we'll just suspend the rules to allow him to speak.
Thank you.
Sure. Aye, sorry, yes.
I have a little problem with giving Republic any more business than they already have. I own a little apartment building and I've got about eight residents and I maintain a, a trash bin. Costs me $65 a month to have that trash bin. Those people haven't picked that bin up in six weeks. I call them every day. "Oh, we'll send somebody out, Mr. Morris, and take care of it." They left the whole neighborhood, and this is right off of Stewart Street, crossing Park Hills. Right there, Dr. Connors had, uh, quite a number of apartments, had a lot of trash up there. It's at there five weeks before they picked it up. Now, you know, I have no use for that kind of... Next thing you know, the health department comes out, tells me I have a problem 'cause the trash is there, it's causing vermin and that sort of thing when I'm paying this country, this company to do a job that they don't do. And it's been getting pretty regular. I noticed over the last six months, they'll miss me once or twice a month. Of course, I only have eight people, so the bin doesn't get real full, you know, in a, in a week, weeks period. But six weeks, boy, it's all over the ground, all over the... So, you know, and another thing is about this thing in recycling. We're involving money to do recycling. I was under the impression that was a function of the state, not the county, by law. So I can't understand what we're doing in the recycling business. If we're gonna do things like that, how about let's just get in the pothole business and that will...
Recycle the vermin to the...
Yeah, that's right, we'll just cover it. But I think, you know, other than that, and, and I thank you for listening to the comment.
Do you live in the city or the county? That's what I'm...
I live at Baker's Ridge. I live in the county.
Okay.
And I'm right on the city line there where the apartment building is on Islewood Drive. And I mean, you know, that's not a proper service and here we wanna get more business.
If you could give to Ashland, before you leave, the secretary, uh, exactly where it is, we will contact, we will make sure Mr. Smith knows from Republic of what's going on and your concern. How's that?
Yeah, it really bothers me, especially in that community.
Sure. Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate you speaking, I appreciate the commission allowing... I appreciate you speaking, and I appreciate the commission allowing him to speak. We're now at new business items, approval of annual reports for TIF districts, and, here she come. We're just starting now the new business items, and the new annual reports for TIF districts. We're almost done.
Okay. Actually, I'd like Renata to speak to this. She prepared this, it's a difficult thing we have to do every year, but she's put it together with all the information that we have in the TIF districts, it's requirement to the, um, uh, development office in Charleston. So with your, uh, motion to approve, if we can submit this.
It says, this, approve this letter and the submission.
Yes.
We just got the four TIFs, Towne, Star City, Morristown, Dustville Park, Mon, General Hospital, University Town Center.
Those are, actually are TIFs.
Right.
There are other TIFs, but they're saying Morgantown.
Okay. For some reason, I thought we had five. Maybe it was my dream.
Not yet.
I think it's a dream, I think it's for Storestown, Idlewood. Oh, no. I just got, I just went picking on Steve. I, I would move that we, uh, uh, approve the report and authorize the president to sign.
Second motion.
It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? Any other new business item? Okay, down to number nine, reports from elected officials. Are there any reports from elected officials? Going once, going twice. Are any reports from department supervisors? Okay, no reports, great, we're almost done. Reports from county commissioner, Mr. Callen, you went, we had him yesterday.
That's fine, I, 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 we're, we're going back down to Western Association of Counties, Commissioner Hawkins and IR, uh, you, you've got other duties you gotta handle, uh, not the least of which is crazy recycling. If you leave, the whole thing might collapse.
Recycling mitigation, I can call a lot of things, yeah.
They call you all kinds of names.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, but, yeah. One, one of the thing, and, and, and we've, we've got different issues that we'll, we'll continue to work on on behalf of the county, the Western Association of County. Carrie's probably gone. Perry, you and Sheriff going down and?
The sheriff, sheriff will be thinking, I think.
Kelly, you going?
Yes. I'm gonna take care of the ranch.
Well, it, it's, it's very good that we're, it's very good that, uh, everyone's active in these associations, that they, they do so, so much good for, for helping us, but both, not only with legislation, but in education and advancing, uh, so that we don't have to, learn everything to trial and error, mistake after mistake, so we learn from others, so that's very beneficial. The second thing I, I really want to do, I, I, I've brought this up year after year after year, uh, even before the two of you were on here, I brought this up every year. I really would like to have that public meeting that I've talked about, uh, discussing the, uh, four different, there's four or five, four or five different forms of county government that's in the statute, so that people can understand, you know, the, the, the five, five council, uh, the three and the county administrator, the, the county executive.
Oh.
The, the, the different modes.
Systematic, yeah.
Forms of government. Because people often say, well, we need five commissioners. Well, maybe we do need five commissioners, but do we really? Let's, let's, let's educate ourselves first on the different forms that we could have, and then we can decide, uh, where we could go for that. So, so I, 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 I'm not saying we need to set anything now, but I wanted to get this back out into the discussion with the two, with the two of you, well, Commissioner, I know you've heard it before, Tom, but Commissioner Hawkins hasn't heard me talk about this, but I really would like to set up that public meeting and invite people in to talk about the forms of government that we can choose.
Relative to that, I would really, really welcome it. My, my point is, the most education that you can bring forth in the community to make them aware of what's going on with their elected bodies, with the government, the better off we all are. It actually shows them regimental complete. I'd like to make one personal comment, when I, I completed now a five weeks of meeting, when I first started, there were many questions from the public, and they would say, how are you going to get along with, and they'd name somebody. I think it's been demonstrated that it's not a case of getting along. We work cooperatively very well to further the best interest of Monday County, and we did get along. So I would like to stress and thank both my fellow commissioners for that, and the respect that they've shown me in the time that I've been on this commission. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. Just one item, not, I'm gonna do the Cliff Notes version. Last night, Morgantown City Council decided to appeal the decision on the truck ordinance and the truck ban. I'm not gonna get into it, except that I think we need to monitor this very closely. I, I believe this is gonna have effects in the county too, so that's all I'm gonna say, but I think we just need to monitor and watch this closely. With that, I have a, do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes?